Thank you all so very much for joining us this evening at our Social Board of Education meeting on February 26, 2018. The time is 7:04. Roll call please. Okay Simmons?
First.
Nelson?
Here.
Griggs?
Here.
Blackman?
Here.
Kretis?
Here.
Huckabee?
Here.
Horace? Here and a four is present. First item on the agenda in our audience comments and we actually have one person who has signed up. I don't know if someone else missed their chance, but if so, speak now. So our first and only community member is Mayor Paul Braun.
Good evening everyone.
Good evening.
President Horowitz, Superintendent Smith, members of the Board of District 161, and members of the audience, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Paul Braun, I'm the mayor of Village Flossmore, and standing to my right is our village clerk Johnny Bradley Scott. And we want to talk quickly here because we know we have a five minute rule which is the same before our Board with regard to what's coming up on the March 20 election. And that is the Flossmore Non-Home Rule Sales Tax Referendum. Now our job this evening is not trying to convince anybody whether you should vote for or against the referendum. We're only here this evening quickly just to make sure that you have the information so that you know which way you should vote, one way or the other. So quickly without further ado, we've handed out some materials, we've tried to give everybody in the audience a copy of the handout that was given to the Board members this evening. So the first question we want to let everybody know about, what is a non-home rule of sales tax? And I stress that this is non-home rule. We are not asking to approve home rule authority for the Village of Flossmore. You probably have heard that Homewood has a referendum asking for home rule authority. That is not what this is. What we are asking the community to decide whether or not it's appropriate for our community is whether or not we should increase the sales tax for a local sales tax of 1% to the Village of Flossmore. And the sales tax right now that we're all paying here in Cook County is 9%, and that goes to the county, it goes to the RTA and a couple of other taxing bodies here, but we're all paying right now near 9%. And what we're asking on this referendum is should Flossmore be able to have a 1% sales tax strictly for the village itself? And this is allowed for non-home rule communities by referendum. So it's our position that if we're going to ask people for more money, it's up to us to decide whether we should agree with that or not. This isn't something that the Board has the authority to pass on its own. So we are asking the community to consider whether or not we should have a penny on a dollar, that's what this costs, it's a penny on a dollar, and we will raise the sales tax rate here in Flossmore to 10%. And the question is, how much money will this generate for the village? We figure right now based on current businesses and our economic development about $550,000. Johnny, you want to tell the folks why we think the sales tax increase is necessary?
So the sales tax is necessary for the Board to maintain services at the level they are provided today. Maintaining quality service is the top priority of this Board. A goal of economic development is to alleviate the financial burden of revenue taxpayers, and in order to do that, the revenue associated with commercial development needs to be maximized. Most of the revenues are paid by residents. Sales tax allows the burden to be shared by non-residents who come to shop in Flossmore. The Village of Flossmore provides services that residents depend on such as police, fire, public works, and home enforcement. In addition, the village is responsible for maintaining and rehabilitating infrastructure systems such as streets, sidewalks, snowplains, school water, water distribution, and sewers. While the cost of those services and infrastructure projects increase, many of the village's revenue sources are flat or defined. This sales tax is one piece of a large effort to address the situation, and it has the least amount of burden on residents compared to other taxes and fees such as real estate taxes and tax increases.
Right now here in Flossmore, our general operating fund budget, we are showing about a $560,000 shortfall. And why do we have a shortfall at this point? And that's primarily, I can throw the state under the bus, but that's what's happening. The state is cutting back on our local revenues as far as our share of the state income tax. They're cutting back on other revenues that are supposed to be shared with the village. We're going to be, we received a 10% cut last year from the state on our revenues for Flossmore. We expect another 10% based on the Governor's budget that we just heard about here about 10 days ago. So right now that's going to pull probably about $150,000 to $200,000 away from us as far as a general operating fund deficit. So at this point, this is not a situation where the village is saying, "We want more money." Well, yes, we do ask for a 1% increase in sales tax, but we're also very cognizant, as this Board has been, in terms of cutting expenses. What can we do not only to ask for more money, but what can we do to cut expenses? What have we been doing? Well, first of all, the Board and staff has worked very hard to reduce health insurance costs here. We're using a defined contribution model and offering a higher deductible plan to employees. We have not increased any of our staff here at this point, our non-union staff, or any increase in their salaries here at this point. And as you can probably imagine, police, fire, and public works accounts for about 92% of the total budget at this point as far as personnel costs. So non-union salary increases were zero this fiscal year. We're using consultants to contract out fire emergency services. We're maximizing part-time employees where possible and converting full-time positions into part-time. We converted the village manager's assistant here to a part-time position this year. We delayed capital equipment replacements here that are necessary for the village, and we're entering into intergovernmental agreements for wherever we can to help share the costs. I'm very, very proud of this Board here who just passed an intergovernment agreement to allow District 161 and the village to hire a full-time marketing and communications director, which we do need to promote the district and to promote our village here. So we're going to be sharing those expenses with District 161, and those are the type of things that we're trying to do to cut expenses. We're also entered in an agreement last year with Park Forest to share a fire truck, and not a day-to-day, but a reserve truck which will allow both villages not to have to purchase another fire truck here for reserve purposes. So those are some of the things that we're trying to do to cut costs here besides asking folks for more money. And so what is this money going to be used for? I think that's probably everybody's first question here, what are we going to do with this money? Well, we're going to plug a hole because right now we're running about a $550,000 deficit, and we're going to also use some of this money for infrastructure. Our strategic plan here that was just completed with our residents' help, you probably communicated as far as your thoughts about where the village should be going. The number one concern here for residents is infrastructure repairs. Our streets and sidewalks need help. Our water system here at this point is needing help here. So some of this money we hope to use also for infrastructure as well. So it's police, fire, and public works to keep the quality of life going here in the village for all of us, and it's also for infrastructure here to help maintain our streets and sidewalks and what we need to do to keep the village up. So another question that the Board considered very hard is what will this do to our local businesses? We certainly don't want to do something that has hurt our local businesses here in town. So part of the handout, I think that most people have here is we gave you a copy of the Illinois Department of Revenue Non-Municipal Sales Tax, and it tells what it covers. Just so you know, this does not cover groceries, does not cover medical or health supplies. Those are accepted here from sales tax. But in terms of talking about the village, we also took a look at who else in the area has this type of tax or a local tax. Seventeen other communities surrounding us, almost everyone surrounding here already has this tax either as a local home rule or non-home rule. Homewood, for instance, has a 2% places for eating tax, so when you eat in a restaurant in Homewood, you're paying 11% now. If their home rule referendum passes, they've already said they want to increase that by another quarter percent, so they'll be at 11 and a quarter percent in their restaurants. We're going to be at 10% if the community approves this. So seventeen other communities, we've included a handout which includes all the other communities that have this tax or have something similar to that effect at this point. So we don't believe that the 1% increase here in Flossmore for the local home rule sales tax will impact our businesses in any way. Johnny, you want to tell our question, what do we think's going to happen if this doesn't pass?
Many of the services that have defined our community cannot be continued if the referendum does not pass, and in that case, the village Board will need to give great consideration to specific services that need to be touched as well as other revenue. Even if the temporary services are not eliminated, there will be an incremental decrease in service and order for expenses to appropriately keep pace with revenue. The village has operated for many years by providing its services at the lowest possible, at the lowest cost possible while still maintaining its high standards of quality. Therefore, induction in service will not only include our nice-to-have services that define our quality of life in Flossmore such as Flossmore Fest and other community events, but will quickly include redefining our basic services.
Thank you Johnny, so that's, in a nutshell, what's going to be on the March 20 ballot here, the Flossmore Non-Home Rule Sales Tax Referendum. And what you should have received in the mail, what we call our frequently asked questions, I provided a copy of that to the Board and to everybody in the audience here. That goes into much more detail in terms of questions about what's going on with the referendum. I want to let everybody know in closing that we are also going to have public meetings here. There's a public meeting coming up this coming Wednesday, the 28th at 7:30 at Village Hall. And there's also a public meeting, specific a Board meeting having nothing to do but the sales tax referendum on Saturday morning, the Saturday morning on March 3rd at 9:00 AM in case folks cannot come to the public meeting. But I encourage anybody, if you still have questions, please let us know. Please come out to the public meeting, public meetings here on Wednesday and Saturday, that's where everybody's going to be. And thank you, thank you so much for allowing us to speak before you this evening, to allow us to receive the information about what's going on with our referendum. I know we have a five minute rule, we're probably well over that at this point, but if anyone has any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Thanks for coming.
Next item on the agenda is student recognition and presentation. First up, Flossmore Hills gifted art students. We are very excited to have the Flossmore Hills gifted art students and Mrs. Gilinsky here tonight to share their artwork with you. They have worked incredibly hard this year, so without further ado, I will introduce Mrs. Gilinsky.
Good evening everyone. My name is Shannon Gilinsky, and I'm the art teacher at Flossmore Hills Elementary School. And I'm part of the team of amazingly talented art educators in the district that includes teachers Jimmy Kubits, Lane Dugan, Jason Walker, Gina Kunda, and Joanna Stavichak. And we teach art to grades that vary from pre-K through 8th grade, and as well as 4th, 5th, and 8th grade gifted art classes. This evening I have the pleasure to introduce to you some of the Flossmore Hills 4th and 5th grade gifted art students, and to give you a sneak peek of some of the absolutely outstanding artwork that they have created for this year's Gifted Art Expo that will take place on May 22nd from 5:30 to 7:30. The 4th grade students presenting their canvases tonight are Akila Smith, Aiden Hayes, Yvonne Compton, Rebecca Garrett, and you girls. And now I have Akila and Rebecca who'll share a little bit about 4th graders' project. Akila?
The theme this year for both Flossmore Hills gifted art classes is art as visual communication. 4th grade students created art acrylic paintings of local business signs from Flossmore, Homewood, Chicago Heights, Hazel Crest, Olympia Field, and Chicago. Students discussed how our artwork allows viewers, especially from this area, to connect to our artwork, life expansions, and can create feelings of nostalgia for the viewer.
Thank you Akila. And next Rebecca?
Acrylic paint was used to create these paintings. We explored techniques such as tinting, shading, taping, and color mixing. We also cropped photographs we used on our iPads to resize some of our canvases using the grid technique to draw them.
Thank you Rebecca. Next, I'd like to introduce the Flossmore Hills 5th grade gifted artists.
Daniel Lee, Lauren Higgins, Salsimus Wal, Kirsten Thomas, Boxal Adams.
And now I have Kirsten and Daniel who will share a little bit more about the 5th graders' project. Kirsten?
5th grade students created self-portrait paintings displaying children's Snapchat filters. We had to actually teach Mrs. Gilinsky how to use the filters for her photographs. Students also had the option to search Snapchat filters online and apply them to their self-portrait drawings if they did not want to be put in.
Thank you Kirsten. And next Daniel?
All artworks were drawn filtered behind. They were exaggerated to the size of artwork, and then carefully painted using gouache paint. They turned out even better than we expected. As we discussed our Snapchat self-portrait project, we realized that they are communicating to our viewers. Aside from our many talents, our 5th grade American culture likes to have fun, we serve to the softies who are very interested in technology.
Thank you Daniel. We hope that you enjoyed seeing a glimpse of the artwork created by school District 161 gifted art students, and we especially hope to see you this year at the Gifted Art Expo which is taking place May 22nd from 5:30 to 7:30. It will surely be amazing. Thank you very much.
So we have certificates for all of you. We'll give those to Mrs. Gilinsky. We're only in the front, but there's, we think we should work.
Perfect. Yeah.
Where are those?
Hey.
Should we stand up?
Yeah, well.
Let's have a...
Hey 4th graders, we have your certificates. Come on over.
What is it?
When you want them in strong, you can hide them.
Yeah, we can do it right here.
Make sure that you have your certificates. Come back on. Come on and talk their certificates behind you so you can see your work.
Mom stays good?
Oh, there's a mom coming in.
Oh. Pretty sure it's all right. Good job, Alex. Thank you 4th graders.
Hold on.
Good job, you guys. Thank you so much.
Well, I gotta do the, there's another thing. I'm out.
Next up, we have Mr. Hunter.
To introduce a few of our students from Parker Junior High, specifically our 7th grade basketball players.
Good evening, Department of Labor, Department of Defense. Very happy to represent Parker and present our 7th grade boys' basketball team. It took 3rd place in a state competition. So very proud of them representing Parker. So we have three representatives from the team here tonight, and so we're just going to ask that you come on up and I call your name. So first we have Katie Space.
Set.
Jan Jackson.
They had a, they had a record of 17 and 3 for the team. Very proud.
Come on over, guys.
There's a few guys that just want stuff back.
Alright.
Always a great way to start after a meeting. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Mr. Smith?
Just briefly, always so proud to have our students out. Really, from the art show to our 7th grade boys' basketball team, we really have talented students, and we really have sponsors, you know, teachers and coaches who go the extra mile to support them. So thank you. Really proud of our students and our staff and our families. I'm happy to report that the shared communications manager position between District 161 and the Village of Flossmore has been posted publicly. We're personally contacted by District 161 parents who are professionals in the field and who are interested in this opportunity as well. So I feel like we're really a strong pool of candidates. Once the window does close, we will have a shared hiring process, and we hope to have the person in place by eight. So that's really exciting. On that same topic though, we will be hosting a meeting of the Communicator Committee of Western Avenue School. That's on Wednesday, February 28th at 6:30, however. We will discuss not only the communications manager position, but also our lessons from our recent coffee with District 161. We try to engage our families differently depending on where they're at, but also identify some future opportunities as well to reach out to parents and community members. Then this Friday, we'll be hosting Representative Anthony Lillidum as he facilitates his annual clergy breakfast. That activity will take place also at Western Avenue School, where he has a family member that attends that location, and so that's why it was chosen. It is a closed event, but again, it's an excellent opportunity just for us to show off the excellent work of our teachers and students and administrators. We're honored to be able to host this activity in all the number of local schools over the years, and so it's a great showcase for not only Western Avenue, but District 161 and all our communities as well. I'm sure to put up some photos of the event on our website and on Facebook this morning. Let's hear it, Mr. Smith.
Any questions or comments, Dr. Smith? Next, I'm on the agenda. A group of consent agenda items listed below. I'd like to pull out speech and language pathologists contract rules if I have a question. Other than that, unless anybody else had questions or comments about items that are under the consent agenda listed below. Okay. Consent agenda items include minutes of executive session, January 22nd, 2018, approval of the Mel Report, Aaron Law Mender, the Timberly Outdoor Education Contract, Amendment to Superintendent's Employment Contract, and gift, Western Avenue PTO, $1,000 donation for library. PTO. Western Avenue PTO, $1,000 donation for library books and supplies. Western Avenue PTO, $1,000 donation for library books and supplies. Do you want me to pull it out? Not really pull it out, just maybe you want to discuss the four components of this type of... Okay. Wait, please remind me, I need to make a motion first, I'm sorry. So before we can discuss the items. So if you can have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda items listed below that I just read off, with the exception of the speech pathologist. Motion, please. So move. So move, Marley, in second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, please.
I just really had a few questions and sort of a comment, one here as well. The B C N D are why not every student? So this seems like this, from understanding this referendum, is structured just for special education students, who knows if it was the entire population?
Great. Okay. Great, that's all I wanted to say. Absolutely. Roll call please. Okay Simmons?
Yes.
Griggs?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Kretis?
Yes.
Horace? Yes, the motion's passed. I need a motion, please, to approve the speech and language pathologist contract. So move. In a second? Second, we have a discussion.
So there was a question about the dates and the contract, two things. One, there are two pieces. There's an annual contract with the company where we do an occupational therapist, and we have to come here first for approval. I'll go back to that, to get stat numbers for those specialty positions. There's another agreement which is a specific person for the rest of the year. So we didn't update dates because when Brown first acquired the company, they generated a digital contract that was a January date, and so we updated those to today. So there are two pieces. There's the main agreement which says we could use them on a stake, we don't have to use them. But then there's the specific agreement which is a specific person for the rest of the year.
And so the start date for both of those are a little bit the same? And that's to...
Well...
The contract start date is, we made it effective today, I changed the date in the contract with the recommendation. And the start date is tentatively set for 3/9, which is a maternity position with two shadow dates prior to that. But if our speech path goes on maternity sooner, the person would activate sooner. So we tentatively have Wednesday set up as the first shadow date, once the contract's approved, so that she'll shadow her to take over the caseload, and then she'll take over whenever she goes on maternity. So we will, so we have a contract with the company and then a contract with the individuals who will be... We have a contract with the company, and typically those contracts are for a year that we just, that we would come back again, as Dr. Smith said, we would ask you for permission to hire somebody, but we have a contract established with the company, so those rates are set for a year, which is nice. But the contract with her is through the company, so they've employed her to start on our start date, but it just gives a little bit more specifics, how many hours per day. It's all reflective of the contract, but it's like an addendum to say, "This is who you're getting." Her name is Lindsay Downs, who we contracted for them. For them. So every time we get a new person signed, we will have an addendum like that? Correct. Any other questions? So just a quick one, so this person will be, is this like a regular person that really knows her kids in school? So this is a speech path that...
Other than that, unless anybody else had questions or comments about items that are under the consent agenda listed below. Consent agenda items include minutes of executive session, January 22nd, 2018. Approval of the Mel report. Aaron Law vendor. The Timberly Outdoor Education Contract. Amendment to superintendent's employment contract. And gift, Western Avenue PT key, $1,000 donation for library. You can't read PTO.
PTO.
Western Avenue PTO, $1,000 donation for library books and supplies. Do you want me to pull it out?
Not really pull it out, just maybe if you want to discuss it for a few minutes after this time. If the parents fall, that's the B C.
Wait, please remind me, I need to make a motion first, I'm sorry. So before we can discuss the items. So if you have a motion, please to approve the consent agenda items listed below that I just read off. With exception of the speech pathologist. Motion, please.
So move.
So move early in seconds.
Second.
Okay, discussion begins.
I just really had a brief question, it's sort of a kind of one year as well. The B C and D are why not every student? So this thing from understanding this periphery is structured just for special education students? Do you know if it was the entire population?
Right.
Okay. Great, that's all of them.
Absolutely.
Roll call, please. Okay, Simmons?
Yes.
Griggs?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Correth?
Yes.
Of course. Yes, the motion has passed. I need a motion, please, to approve the speech and language pathologist contract.
So move.
In a second. Discussion.
So there's a question about the dates and the contract, two things. One, there are two pieces. There's an annual contract with the company where we do an occupational therapist. We have to come here first for approval. I'll go back to that too. It's that number for those specialty positions. There's another agreement which is a specific person for the rest of the year. So we didn't update dates because when Brown first acquired the company, they generated a digital contract that was a January date. And so we updated those to today. So there are two pieces. There's the main agreement which says we could use them on a stake, we don't have to use them. But then there's the specific agreement which is a specific person for the rest of the year.
And so the start date for both of those are a little bit the same?
Well.
The contract, I'm sorry, the contract start date is, we made it effective today. I changed the date in the contract with their permission. And the start date is tentatively set for 3/9, which is a maternity position with two shadow days prior to that. But if our speech path goes on maternity sooner, the person would activate sooner. So we tentatively have Wednesday set up as the first shadow date, once the contract's approved. So she'll shadow her to take over the caseload, and then she'll take over whenever she goes on maternity. So we will, so we have a contract with the company and then a contract with the individuals who will be... We have a contract with the company and typically those contracts are for a year. That we just, that we would come back again, as Dr. Smith said, we would ask you for permission to hire somebody. But we have a contract established with the company, so those rates are set for a year, which is nice. But the contract with her is through the company. So they've employed her to start on our start date, but it just gives a little bit more specifics. How many hours a day? It's all reflective of the contract, but it's like an addendum to say, this is who you're getting. Her name is Lindsay Downs, who we contracted for them. So every time we get a new person signed, we will have an addendum like that? Correct. Any other questions?
So just a quick one. So this person will be, is this like a regular person that really knows her kids in school?
So this is a speech path that we interviewed at a basic interview level. And when we put them through our initial speech path interview, if we didn't like them, we would not have agreed to hire them. So we, I actually had Crayman vetted her through our interactions. I mean, we interviewed her as if we were trying to hire her group. But we hired her through the contract agency. We had the speech path vacancy up for two or three months, and we didn't have anybody apply. Okay, so.
Will there be, I guess my real question is, is this someone we expect to be around year to year? Or will help it with me?
This individual person?
Yes. For every year which we work at, it's a new person.
So we're filling a maternity leave vacancy right now. We are fully staffed for speech with our own staff. We just couldn't find someone to cover this maternity leave, which is why we turned to the agency.
Okay.
So it's not, I'm not trying to fill a hole.
Okay.
I'm trying to fill a hole, not a position that hurts.
Sure, I got you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Roll call, please. Okay, Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Correth?
Yes.
Griggs?
Yes.
Corruth?
Yes, and the motion has passed. Next item on the agenda, information items. The first one is registration, residency plan and timeline. I did have questions. Were there any other, were there any board members who had questions regarding the first item? Registration, residency plan and timeline.
I did. I just think about clarification. Okay. About the, and I read it quickly, so I didn't just read it, but it looked like it was just certain grades that were going to be there. Because I just wanted to tell the freshman.
Our rationale really was trying to get everyone through at least every third year. To cut down on making everyone come through every year. More than likely what we're gonna end up doing is having a lot of overlap because people have more than one child and they may not have their second child, may not be in the grade that we're looking at. But it would be, so kindergarten, third, sixth, so you essentially split the district up into thirds. We would also then do anyone who's lagged in the system as possible. We're not sure about their residency or anyone who has information that has moved. We thought that moved during the course of the year. And additionally, we do people growing living with another family because that can be a little more transient in nature. Plus any of our, any events that moves are required to meet with the Blackman every year. Any way to get more information on their current situation. But really it was trying to cut down on the volume and be able to do this in a little more expeditious manner.
Most of the residency issues that we catch are after the fact. They're reported by office staff typically. Then we follow with our investigation to identify them. A number of them. There are certainly families that come in. Our administrative staff do a really good job of verifying all the documents. Administrative assistants from the buildings and really spend a lot of time here being with families and parents. But for the most part, the residency issues that we have worked through have come after the fact, not from the verification of documents.
Earlier last year, we discussed a possible trice for searching for residents. Are we still looking at that? Are we deciding not to use that?
That was the piece on the, with the addresses. We can always bring that back. At the time, the board was not very receptive to those conversations about the number of curricula from last year. So again, we can always bring that back as a discussion item.
I guess I'll bring that back. And I'd also ask that we bring a representative of the company to present, if that's possible.
Sure.
Get questions answered. Board had a lot of questions about what we do, what basis, privacy, credit checks, et cetera. It may resonate more appropriately if we have a representative from the company here to answer those questions.
Okay, would it be okay if I reset the report that we did last year? Just to jog the memories. If you have any questions, then we can capture all, as many of those as possible. Have the representative put together a frequently asked questions list, and then come in. At least we'll have baseline information to go with.
So are we going to, are we going to get this baseline information in our next board package? Or is it something that the D E T S have you pushed out? So we have a chance to sort of...
Yeah, absolutely. Well, as soon as we get it, we'll look.
And so we can only be looking at just that one company? This is not something that we can be looking at several companies at?
We can try. We can see what's out there.
Yeah, because I would like, if we're gonna present, it would be nice if we can have at least more than one. I think one in the world, one company to present. Because they bring in different options at times, different levels. So I think usually in the middle, whether we have some points on it.
Couple of things. The first question is, do we, we haven't talked much about registration and residency or, you know, what the data looks like in terms of those students or families that are out of compliance. Has, what have you seen this year? Has that number increased, has it decreased, or about the same?
So I think officially we've had under ten full residency investigations, I believe. We've not, so we will at some point recommend another vendor to complete our investigations at a certain time. But after we gather all the information, we make a determination, then the family is eligible for hearing. And for the hearing process, we send them all of our surveillance information, notes, et cetera. We have the feedback from our lawyers as then not to move those forward. Because we probably lose the bar of proving that a family does not live in the district is pretty high. Now, again, I think there's also an issue on the investigation side. But we have not sent any of them to the hearing officer. And we're paying forty bucks an hour for surveillance and for, you know, home visits and those sorts of things. So right now, we have very few students even when they would receive the community. They don't know, I think, so we followed up on those and asked parents to provide additional information. We really have not had that many families who were achieved.
So you said under ten?
I believe so.
Under ten.
That we've investigated?
Under ten.
I'll get you the exact number. We have not brought any of them to hearing. We've sent letters, saying we don't think that you live here. And so we'll give you the exact information, I'll put that out this week.
Okay.
But we've not taken any of them to hearing.
Then if we can pass the day to, what we can compare to?
I'll see if I can, for the 2016, 2017 schedule.
So Dana, just to clarify, you're saying that it may be a function, I don't understand. Is it, is it a function of the investigators? Because the only data is only as good as received. So is it a function that it really is only directed to families? Or is it a function of the investigators are not investigating? And there's more people that's out there that we just don't know about?
Well, I think they're probably separate. I think the investigators are investigating. It's the, our expectations of the information that we receive. I think there's a difference there. But we can only investigate what we know about. And to our teachers' credit and the administrative assistants, if you've noticed, you know, it really would, the challenge is it comes down to, you know, the little things. A child being late every day can also be found out, maybe they're coming from two towns over. It's those sorts of situations that very attentive adults typically identify. But if we don't identify those situations, there's nothing to investigate.
So what is, I don't, has this number stuck ahead? But what is the average that typically investigated in the period? Is it around ten?
And is it only just the forty dollars an hour? Or is it put there? I got another amount set too, because you said the attorneys have to pursue. So I mean, just how much money have we put into, just to say if it was ten, ten? How much money have we, and these sources have been put into this? But that, as you know, too, to best, we're going to look at this in terms of receiving these presentations, you know, numbers. And we'll all help to kind of draw the business across.
You mentioned that you would be bringing forth recommendations to change the vendor.
So I think what we'll want to do is, there's a number of different companies out there. Our school uses a different one. Our particular law firm uses a different company. And they seem to be happy with the information that they're getting. So what we'll want to do is review those and bring them back.
And this, this vendor that we're currently using is also the vendor who owns the program that we were considering for registration? I believe it's true. Is that correct? So will it all be a reason why we want to get, you know, examples of other systems that are others? Yeah.
Bring it up.
I have a question since registration is on this point you sent to. I think I brought this to the board, Fran. As a parent with four kids, I end up having to fill out the same, same four times. Quite a bit of information came out of the four times. Did you look at revising that aspect of it or any possibility of becoming a little more efficient with the paperwork aspect?
We could. I mean, the big package is first, your first initial registration. After that, it plus back to me. There's really only, you know, it's a lot less. We can look at it as like family, but...
I think I brought my about like four twenty-nine, something ridiculous.
Is that your initial registration?
No, it's just what I came to do, register the kids, get a custody and bring anything. It's just, I think I don't remember counting, I wrote four to ten, I think. Oh, yeah.
The addresses put on there several times, like different, a different affidavit for every child, every school and so on. So some of it, we can't, we, some of it a parent actually has to handle, right? And you can't do a child... That's part of the accusation that I'm saying I live here and that my child is here. And that, you know, there can be even within family units, different for different children.
Sure.
So what we can do is look, we'll just sit down with the packet and go through and separate those items where you're citing the dotted line from your typical toast items. If there's a way to auto fill from Skyward, some of, we'll check, at the very least we can look.
Please. Any more questions or comments regarding registration and residency? January financials, any questions, comments? School psychologist intern proposal? This one's sure to generate some questions. Frozen pipes at Serena Mills. See cans all over.
I always go to some schools and colleges. There is, it's for our region that we're talking about. Social worker. I don't know that I agree with that.
Sure. So I would say social worker is more of a collection, therapeutic person. The school psychologists typically, in a traditional sense, in a school focused on data collection, assessment and special education process.
That's generally supported in special education.
Yeah, but not student service. It's more of the process, the gatekeeping between IP, no, a student who's not identified is having visibility and then through the identification process, IP rating and stuff.
Thank you.
Any other kind of question about frozen pipes?
No, I didn't actually. It's there to cover for the show.
It's always good.
That was the important, that was my take.
No questions? All right, Kelly.
Well, I don't know. Just something that comes to mind, so anything dependent to prevent it? You know, like in your house, you know how they make the recommendation that when the temperature hits a certain, anything as prohibitive measures that now thinking back?
Yeah, well, I'll work with my HVAC contractor on that. We'll probably have to do something different than maybe heat panels in those bathrooms, which is a cause of it. So we're gonna work on that and come up with a solution.
So there could be an additional cost later down the road?
Yes.
To prevent a situation like this from happening, you know, I'm just saying what happened again.
Possibly enough to disset the cost. So. That was some extreme weather we went through for those two kids. So sub-zero at night and single digits at the back of the day.
When you say radiant heat panel, or the cause, they're the what need? Or they just were providing insufficient heat fixtures?
That's what froze and split in one bathroom at Serena, which started hot water into five units in classrooms.
So the thing was pumping hot water through froze, would suggest to me a design flaw.
I'm sorry.
That would suggest to me that it's poorly designed.
Uh, probably insulated a little bit better too. Maybe, those bathrooms are, their outside walls, they're tight, closed spaces.
But is this like, is this at the end of a loop and that's, I mean?
It was, not all the way at the end, it was close to the end.
Did it freeze there and cycle when water wasn't flowing through it?
No, no, no. We always had, the boilers were always operating, the pumps were always on.
So I guess, I mean, that's, that's a heating system and the water flowing through is holding up, freezing.
It, it broke.
Right, it's not working. We can't possibly, we weren't in practice, but that holds.
It, it's very small tubing, it's only about three eighths inch tubing that goes into this radiant heat panel, sort of back and forth a couple of times and then comes back out. That's all it does. Nothing, no fan is blowing on it to kind of get heat into it. It's just to radiate heat into the little water closet, essentially. So.
And just, we've already addressed this. Have we looked into a cost of insulating that, just on an outside wall? Maybe insulating to the outside?
Um, I will with precision, I usually see that for others. As a possible means of, not that, I guess, hopefully none of the initial cooperate too.
Thank you. Last two items, March four topics in PPI as MOU. Do you think anyone wants to discuss for those? Next item on the agenda, officially discussion item. First item, initial staffing.
Thank you. So there's two parts to the discussion part of the open and open sessions. And part of having an executive session. That's going to be at the end of the meeting, so if we can keep it in, it'd be great. This is an initial conversation, staffing plan for the 2018, 2019 school year. Planings will come up a little bit later in the meeting. But one of the things that's really important, especially the staffing conversation, is to look at our current lead. Look at our current staffing patterns, make sure that we are making the decisions that put students in a amazing position. That put staff numbers in a really good position to be successful. We use very conservative numbers, can carry around through second grade and third, fifth, target of twenty students. Can carry around for second, twenty-five students in third and fifth. Just as a general level that we think... Just as a general level that we think we can generate the most movement for our students who need to catch up, but also our students at the top of the spectrum as well. As we looked at all of our numbers, we identified some places where we could recapture some savings without reducing adding services. You'll see in the report, what that really comes down to is reducing one FTE from art, music, and PD at the elementary level. Again, we aren't reducing any services, but if you think about the size of some of our schools, our elementary level, they are all staffed the same way. So all of them have one art, one music, and one PD from Heather Hill, Lost Mirables, to Sterling Hills, to Western Avenue. But the size of the buildings is wildly different. So we've identified some options where you can share people between buildings. Again, not reduce any programs, not reduce any services, but still generate good experiences for students. We do have a number of retirements as well, which helps in that process, so that we are keeping our people whole and certainly not reducing actual people as much as possible, although that certainly does play a part in this. We try really hard to be responsible without, again, hurting people and hurting programs. It's really important to us. A couple of other pieces that we would look to reduce, and again, reducing is just the overall umbrella. This is not to say that they would not be replaced or used differently, but just how we're currently allocating our human resources. Right now, STEM D position is at Norman D Villa. We would look to reduce that specifically as I move an FTE out to the buildings as a dedicated STEAM teacher. Parker is on this list specifically. The other piece is reducing six paraprofessionals overall. Right now, we have paraprofessionals or instructional aides who deliver interventions. We want to make sure we have our most qualified people doing that. So we have two per building who deliver literacy interventions. We recommend trading in or swapping out six of those paraprofessionals who do literacy interventions for three additional reading specialists to go into those buildings. The reading specialists that we have generate a lot of movement for our kids, and they're highly golf, they have a lot of training, and we believe that they'll generate the most movement. An additional piece for discussion would be our security guards at Parker. Right now, we do have seven of them, plus a safety aide. What is it? It is, so this is actually a topic we've been talking about often. Safety aide, we believe started as a way to greet people at the door, check identities, and then get them into the office. Depending on how your office is set up, those people are still used that way. You would notice at Parker, Mr. Honeycomb is your safety aide. He can come in, he greets them, takes your name down, runs raptor, et cetera.
Frankly, security aide.
What was that?
Frankly, security aide.
Yes, absolutely.
Did you say seven, S E D and seven?
Yes. So we have seven, but they're also a rotating schedule. So again, this would be reducing two, but we would, pending a conversation with Holman Flossom High School and some of their experts, Chief Polk as well, just on the safety of the building, we may come back. Absolutely recommend making some of those people just straight full time. There's an issue with forming relationships as they come and go. There's an issue with how we secure the building that we want to focus on. Another conversation frankly that I did have with Chief Polk this morning was an opportunity to further look at school resource officers. Especially at Parker, they have an actual Lost Mirables officer station at the building. Again, this has nothing to do with discipline, it has everything to do with forming relationships, making connections with students and families, and then frankly also securing the building. So I think that's a conversation that we'll bring back as well. We'd also like to make a couple of additions. We recognize that our buildings are working pretty efficiently, but we also have other places where we could have some additions. At Parker specifically, it is the only building without a dedicated instructional coach. So there's not a person that the teachers can lean on to go to for specific strategies. To their credit, the elementary coaches and to Mr. Crawford's credit, the elementary instructional coaches have been working at Parker with different grade levels, and we've seen some good movement there. We'd also like to add a social worker simply to the building. One of the challenges right now is we're seeing a lot of emotionality in our kids. They are going through a lot. Social media is something else on the middle school mind, and right now, our social workers are stressed very thin. So then in fact, that they don't have enough, they make themselves available to their crowd. But servicing students who just need to talk to somebody, students who we can see having some difficulties emotionally, but do not have a follow-up for a plan, do not have an IP. We're delaying service to them just because of timelines and teachers who are servicing kids with mandatory events. So we'd look to add that additional social worker. Also, as our students are rolling up from the elementary to Parker Junior High, we would have to add one English language teacher also at that location. Again, you can see the four reading specialists represented, we would add one at Parker, one had existed at Parker Junior High, but it was, when the person left it, it was not refilled. Again, we have the STEAM teacher, the difference between the STEAM teacher and the STEM D position would be a fully dedicated person who can still be held delivering those services. One other position that we have talked about and we have, the need for this is really clearly demonstrated, would be a custodian supervisor. Right now, Scott is working incredibly hard during the day. He also supervises everyone at night. So essentially, he was supervising two shifts, a first and a second shift. And the amount of time and the amount of issues that we're having in the evening requires him to be here, you know, to check in, to provide support, to provide resources, just to make sure our buildings are clean and that the teachers have everything that they need. We've noticed an issue with cleanliness in some places, and he responds to those, but it's also distracting him from the important work that we have to do. So this could be, it's a high-impact position, but it's a low-impact financially. The next piece would be to hold back on one kindergarten position at Heather Hill. Right now, we're anticipating about thirty kindergarten students. Obviously, we would not run a kindergarten class at thirty or nowhere close to that. But we would like to start the registration process, make sure we have enough kids, and then add that position back. I think one of the challenges that we've seen is you have multiple sections in a building, no problem. When you have potentially one section in a school, your ability to move kids around really suffers. So some of the numbers at Heather Hill are low, and we can't run two sections in those classrooms, but at some point, you'll have to really conversation about what does it mean to run one section of a grade level in a school? Or, you know, do we run two sections of fourteen? Or do we run one section of twenty-five, twenty-six and then move students to another location? So those are the conversations for now. But realistically, next fall, looking at the staffing process for 2019, 2020, we should have more conversations.
So the conversations that we have, it would affect not this coming school year, the next school year, or?
I think the conversation is about section number and class size would be, they could affect next year as well. Just have to make the determination sooner rather than later.
Okay. And the, do we have some sense of, is there any, is there any growth in the class size? Can we start off with, you know, like twelve kids and then it jumps to eighteen and drops back to support of the state assistant in August? For, yeah, for Evis?
We can check. So right now, Heather has a bubble at fifth grade where they have fifty-one students. So for example, they're projected to have thirty-one students in kindergarten next year.
How many do they have still?
Thirty-five. So there's a, there's a bubble of fifty-one students that exit their, that will be in fifth grade next year. And then after that, each coming grade level is in, we have one that's in the high twenties, and the rest are in the low thirties. So you have to make some judgment calls. The FTE would say we need one point three teachers. I would say that doesn't exist, so do you run up and do you run down? And if you run up to two, that's fantastic, you're running third, fourth, and fifth grade sections at sixteen. But again, it is, it's a...
What's our, what's our ability to have capacity that we were going to show? I'm assuming we don't have, so if we're going to open overflow kids to other schools, Western or Flossom?
Depending on, so the benefit of having multiple sections is that you can create space. So between Lost Mirables and Western, there are available seats, probably the best way to look at it. But again, it's a tough, and to do just professionally, for a teacher not to have a partner, just to go next door and say, okay, here's what I've seen with my students, this is what the data shows, do you want to plan this activity? And, you know, those teachers that have, they're all, you can see, staff is in their PLCs, so they do plan and rely on each other. So it's a big, it's a big decision to run one section in true, the counterpoint. So right now, we would essentially, every grade level would have two sections, with the exception of kindergarten, we'd be waiting for those students to show through the registration process.
Can we have a, some sort of trend over the years that we see with registrations? And in other ways, sort of do a head count, they sort of gauge how many kids we expect?
Well, so we can run those through forecast, fine.
I mean, last year, we did get, the majority of the other kindergarten kids came at registration in March. So we'll have a pretty good idea by the end of March, we'll put them in that roll pool. All of the advertising going out was made for kindergarten, groundhog pay. And we'll see, we'll see what happens in March, how we can start a new mission call.
And that's to be very aggressive with their marketing, with their notes, with Facebook, et cetera. We just want, we want to know that those standings are coming, and then we can make those standings, those decisions.
Can you go back to the proposal or recommendation for instructional coaches at Parker? So we currently have no instructional coaches?
It's, we have the elementary coaches spend time at Parker.
And the proposal, it's actually coming back to me. And the proposal is to have one instructional coach next year at Parker? How many do we need?
I think one to start would be fine. So the other, the coaching kind of structure would be, you know, you first, you start and your, your average to strongest teachers will be willing to take that risk and form that relationship. They have experience with a coach, they generate success, and then other teachers join that process and grow. So realistically, with a building that size, certainly we could use more than one. I would say conservatively, if we start with one dedicated person, then that would be a great place. We are bound by the contract to, for instructional coaching positions, primarily our pool is only current one sixty, one staff. So the person that we hire will probably may not be a trained coach. It will be someone hopefully with a lot of instructional acumen and relationship skills and then just a lot of PD and training. We have a number of good coaches currently, but it'll take some time to get them on.
And, I'm sorry, one more question. And so how many instructional coaches do we have at the elementary school?
Four.
One per, so this would leave us with five total, one per. But again, it gets into the, so it gets into the specials discussion. So we have a building with eleven sections as opposed to a building with twenty sections, both having the same amount of staffing. So I think it's, we have to have conversations at the board level on how tightly we want to run those, those staffing patterns and our allocation.
Are we looking at, for Parker, because it's, it's, you know, student states are divvied out into different disciplines. Are we looking for discipline-specific instructional coaches, maybe even in the future? Or are we looking at, these are the, you know, rock-solid teaching strategies you should be using universally? You following?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, you know, certainly at the elementary level, where the classroom is generally too jerky. It's very appropriate to have, you know, somebody who can mentor, the best in Charlotte, Daniel, or your model, a really good teaching, can help you do this. Whereas, you know, if somebody is, you know, if we really need to focus on our reading scores, or our science scores, or our math scores, you know, would we look maybe a little differently? And is that part of a longer-term structure, or is that an initial consideration?
So I think the initial focus would be on effective instruction. Effective question, I think, student engagement, classroom management, those pieces, to generate the most effective environment possible. And then trying to really identify what's our need in those content areas, and then look at which resources we're needing. HF is a huge benefit, having that in our backyard. And to their credit, all of the administrators there are open with their time, feedback, and their resources as well, so access to the permanent chairs and access to their content specialist.
And one other question regarding the, our pool of candidates. Is it that the contract says that we must pull only from, or we have to go through a process by which we give internal candidates a really fair opinion?
I'm not sure if it says it must. It must, yeah. So again, we will post the position, assuming we get candidates. The challenge, I guess, we could run into a situation where we don't have a viable candidate. That's legit, legitimate possibility, I don't want to determine where our next steps are from.
Or we end up pulling a good candidate out of the classroom and we haven't filled that?
Right, create a deficit to fill in.
And then what type of training do the coaches receive?
Yeah, so all of our coaches participate in a coaching network, partnership with the Burbank School District, with their instructional coaches. And then we do training throughout the school year on best practices in coaching. We use text, dialogue, and ADR, our coaching to guide us throughout the school year. So there's some foundational training that we do on a going, and then as they get more content specific, we build up those skills throughout the school year. Are you focusing on math, are you focusing on reading? But everyone gets the foundational best practices and helping to develop.
Are there any other questions for Mariah and Misses Johnson?
I just wanted to make sure that we love our art itself today. And I just want to make sure that our art and our kids are better in the education, so we can answer that issue.
I will have some follow-up questions around the security piece, just because that was a lot, and I'm just trying to connect all the dots.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure if I have connected them all correctly, but I just want to get a better understanding.
We can send a visual of the schedule as well, so you can see the number of people and how they're scheduled into the building.
I'd also like to, at some point, once you're looking at this, re-setting up good security, having discussions, it doesn't necessarily need to be a four-level discussion, but about whether they're armed and what their training requirements are and qualification requirements are.
So we did meet with a vendor along those lines this week. They can provide everything from unarmed security guards to often police officers who are armed. It just depends on the type of service that we're looking for, the purpose. Obviously, we know we want to have a safe and secure environment, but are we looking at after-school activities, is it a during-the-day issue?
Well, I think we absolutely want a safe and secure environment, but we also don't want it to feel like policing.
Absolutely.
So we don't want kids to feel like, you know, they're under surveillance in that kind of way, so. So...
Okay. One is, why do you think, from the tri-conference last year, one of the big takeaways from Michael Dorn's presentation as an expert on school security and so forth, really was trying to get people to stop fixating on the mass shooting and think of more of the realistic day-to-day issues. One issue people are present, if you create a school that is like in prison, the students will start acting like prisoners. And then it's... Part of that conversation, I think, with security is kind of a culture issue with students. And that is really taking ownership of their school. And that he said that has really had the largest impact on creating a safe environment, as well as...
And I think that's part of what we're going to do. If you have any more information, whether it's with HF or the Flossmore Police Department. Right now, we have people who are working hard in those positions. But the question is, are they working in the proper ways? We currently don't have any security experts on staff. And I'm not sure if we did when those security positions were originally identified. So I've asked chief for some training resources that we can use to provide. There are things that we can do as well, de-escalation training. But I think in the past, we thought of our security guards as actual security guards. And I don't know necessarily that they are. But I think they sort of fill that role. We want to make sure that they have the skills to do their role. But also that we aren't creating just a building that feels like it's meant to control students. We want, I hope, a building that's welcoming, that's incredibly safe, but not to control them.
That logic can be used across the entire...
Yes.
Okay, next item, additional crossing guards.
Yes, so you have two things. You have the report, and you also have the Board of Education's policy on transportation. So this request came from parents of Westmore Avenue School and visited a recent PTO meeting. These families live west of the train tracks. Right now, the way the crossing guard process works, the Flossmore Police Department will identify hazardous crossing, essentially make a recommendation to us, saying we need a crossing guard at this location. And then we split the difference, or we split the cost. Right now, the request has been made for students to be able to walk from the west side of the tracks to add crossing guards at two places, essentially Sterling Avenue at Flossmore... Sterling and Central and Park at Central. It's kind of a lie. They've tried it with one person, and there's no way to cover both of them. So if we didn't move down this pathway, we would need to add at least two people. And it would be from here to Fran and Central. That's a challenge. We have an opportunity right now to kind of take a half step. There's already a police officer who's at Flossmore and Sterling in the morning, conducting traffic. We could pick up an afternoon crossing guard, which would mean that students crossing Sterling would cross at Flossmore Road, and then they would walk north and determine where they're in their neighborhood. That would work something. I believe we would pay for the full year $1,210 for that position. Again, it's only a half day. So we don't have a recommendation for you at this time. I think, can you think quickly about this issue? Because as we decide to add crossing guards here, we want to make sure that we have a clear reason for adding them, because we could have abandoned them all over where there are not hazardous crossings.
So the two, the option for two crossing guards, is that then you have to have these crossings again?
No, it has not. This is just a request.
There a board process on that?
No.
Would that be issued by the district or by parents?
I'm sorry.
Would that be, that hit or would that be issued by the district or by parents?
You mean to make it a hazardous crossing? We would make that determination, and it has not been determined at this point.
When you copy that, I'll go. Generally, it's faster, that's...
For hazardous, to determine a hazardous crossing. It's supposed to be good. Like I said, we have not identified it. So we would be adding crossing guards in a location that is not hazardous based on your request.
So isn't there an assessment? I'm not sure what the village is doing, but isn't there some sort of traffic assessment that is happening that should help us figure out the most, you know, optimal spots to put?
There's a number of challenges with that whole area. I think the roundabout is an issue, and I think that's where the concern from our parents is coming from. This is not out of left field. It can be a challenging area for children to walk through. So I really appreciate the thought that the parents have put into this and in making this request. And they've been very positive about it. I believe that there are plans to do in traffic or do in that area and to work on the engineering. But I believe it is going to be a seven-figure project amongst the changes to get down the pipeline in order to make it as palatable, as possible to walkers and to commuters. So I'm not sure where they are in that process, because I know... To change, well, to complete the assessment and then to make further changes are going to be, if there are changes, to the roundabout or to crosswalks to... So I believe that work has been talked about, but I don't know if they've started at all, given the engineering or review process.
I think it's maybe such an antiquated thing. But is there something, something called a school safety anymore? Where kids will actually help other kids?
Me and the trolls?
Yeah.
They exist, but you don't get the awesome belt.
I wouldn't vote for it.
Sure, no, no, they exist. They don't exist that far.
Is it more effective or...
It's effective, but I don't know that I would put it in that position. Help students cross the road.
Something I just want to expand here. This was back several years ago before I got on board. And I really pushed for this, and then I had to reach out to I-DOT. And I-DOT ended up coming and taking a look at the area. The school had to put in a request, because traditionally, it had not been done.
Sure.
And I-DOT was very, very open to doing that and making these assessments and these studies. But then, of course, the other parts of the market is going to, you know, the actual regulations done to make the accommodations done, how they're going to be implemented. But I do know that I-DOT does take a look, because I mean, I really pushed for that. Not to start early, but all the areas of cross that were being affected, or needed for hazards. So I do know that I-DOT definitely, they do that department's service. And I think Fran definitely knows that.
What they do is designate whether it's a hazardous crossing or not. Half of that is up to us to determine what we're going to do. Which we're doing right now. If I can, you know, take my traditional crossing guard as something else we can do. Whether it's called a hazardous or not, it's really just about what you want to do without...
Yeah, because it has to be addressed, you know. If it ends up being, I know the situation, it has to be addressed and not really pushed for that. Because I mean, if you take those preventative measures now, you know, this may not be the same circumstances. It may save a whole lot of dollars come later. So when you're talking about children's lives and safety, so...
Dude, I have a question. How many crossing guards in general do we have at the school?
I don't know.
When I see them, you know, and I don't know if, like, the people who, like, the crossing guards at Parker, that are right there in front of Parker, I don't know if they're one of the seven security guards or whether they're specifically crossing guards. I wonder how many crossing guards we have.
I believe those are, I believe those are our staff nodes.
Yeah, okay.
Sure, or the safety.
Yeah, okay.
They do know that the crossing guard positions are posted here around. Because it's very difficult for people to apply. The people that we do have are very dedicated, and they stick with it.
Tough job.
It's a very tough job. And they've been out the cold, they've been out the rain, and we're very thankful for how safe they keep our kids. So we can get the information on the crossing guards. How do we have to hold? You have the cost here. We anticipate that's going to change, but it would be minimal. Right now, that area is not designated as a hazardous crossing. Is there any information? Or is there a direction that you would like me to go with this information support?
How we came to the determination of a national... I don't know what we have to say. I have a point about doing that. And my gut reaction is, it will not allow people walking down these street, Flossmore Road back there. Especially it's the cost here, so it's, you know, the cost is $1,200. Very crossing guard, and then the inevitable question, like, well, how much can do cost us? We're walking, we're editing, five minutes to walk to school. So, so we, the costs are in that range.
Well, that's what it would be.
Along those lines, then, I guess it would be the responsibility of the board to determine if there are other areas that have the same issue with other schools, where they are at this crossing further than one mile.
Correct.
Well, we always have a responsibility to... It would really come down to this. Parents have issued those, take a look at. We don't need to go out and... Two ones crossing.
True, but is there a need to identify those pieces for families working with them that may not have the same voice as the families that brought this issue across?
I know I-DOT does have that.
We'll gather that break-in. Thanks for bringing it up.
Any more questions or comments regarding the crossing guard?
Everyone. So we have students that are considered homeless, that's the A-Montel program. And throughout the district, we have less of the number this year than last year, which is very exciting. I'm hoping that they're getting housing. I know for a fact one family applied through the Cook County Housing Authority and did gain housing. Her housing wasn't in her district, and they're very sad that they had to move. But I was able to help her physically take that. So we made it very seamless. But, you know, they finished out the year, there were two months left, as any child was able to do, and a parent transported her. And then, you know, they changed his... She's doing well, she called the station to... In general, we have a lot less, like I said, a lot less students this year. We've employed, based on our presentation last year and subsequent conversations with other homeless liaisons and other business officials, other options. We have a student who is using the train, which is very cost-effective. A parent asked if he could use the train. So that made it, that kind of opened it up for us. Last year, we said a lot of our kids are really young, and we don't want to bring them, you know, commuting on the train. But this parent requested it, a older student, so they requested it. We've certainly honored it. It is definitely a price difference from the transportation. We also have parents that are not driving their children to school. They chose to do that over having been picked up. That also is, as I said, we do reverse the IRS monitoring, but it is much less expensive than our regular MBA transportation. So I just, if there's, you know, anything in general, I put a lot of information in the report. We're sharing a lot of costs with other districts. We're asking a lot better questions, I think. Well, maybe not better, but we're really working together. We have a lot of families that live with other families. They're choosing to share expenses. I think some of them last year came in and really said, well, I'm really homeless. I'm living with them. And we asked more questions after significant trainings last year. And said, well, are you living with them by choice? Yes, we're sharing expenses. We're, this is how it's, we're making it work. Well, that's a live with, not a double up. So double up means that they're just coach certain, for lack of a better term, to kind of make it work. So we, that is, we'll begin to decrease, overall, decrease our expenses. Last year, one of the questions was, are the districts paying? Almost all, every district is paying. Chicago doesn't tend to pay well. And one of our other districts hasn't paid since earlier in the year, but I think that's just billing, and we'll get it from them. So everything else is pretty much up to date. Some districts pay on a two-month cycle. So we're, everything's pretty good. So numbers are down, which is good. I hope it means people are not suffering as much.
I have a question. So in the background information, it's just a subject that I've read a couple times, and I just don't understand it. So where you have, we also have students that are new to the area of Flossmore. And Flossmore is the closest district to where they are double up. So is that, is that new to the area part that's growing?
So we have two ways to be homeless. Well, there's lots of other ways to be homeless. Two ways that you qualify for attending schools under the A-Montel. One is school of origin. So if you lived in, if you were a resident of the district when you lost your housing, you can continue to attend school here, because this is your school of origin. So you have ownership to it, to maintain consistency. We had a family last year move from a southern state. And they came up and they moved in with some relatives. They didn't have housing. They just kind of landed there. They were literally homeless, but they moved to this area. The parent moved her job, because she couldn't afford to get a housing to get. So she was new to the area. So that, and she was living with a resident of our district. So if they were living with a resident, so somebody came to the area. In fact, somebody did. This summer, somebody came, and they called and said that I'd like to be, you know, I'd like to have my children attend your school. And I said, great, where'd you move to? Tell me, tell me what's going on. She said, well, we don't have housing, but we're staying in the hotel in Matson. And I said, well, I'm really excited that you're in this house from an area, but the closest school district to where you're living is Matson School District. Let me help you with that phone number. And she then said, well, I'm really trying to move back into the, into a townhouses in Park Forest. And this was, we had a month, it was like the end of July, but it was almost a month before school started. And I said to her, ma'am, Flossmore's not your district, because that's where you're at. But what I would do is I would wait. If you really think in the next two weeks, you're going to gain residence in Park Forest, wait, because then, then we're not, you're not changing schools, you're not registering one and changing a different one. I probably spend half an hour to an hour overall a week, a lot more in the summer. But on average, talking with families about being homeless. A lot of families don't know they have school of origin rights to be consistent and stay in their, in their school that they work. We have a number of students that had, kind of were double up here, but they had gone to school in communities, two communities over. I said, you know, you can stay in your school. I can stay in my school? You can. You're telling me you're homeless. You can stay there. So we try to educate parents both to stay here, because consistency for the kids is what the law's doing, or to stay where they, where they're from. And the transportation, I mean, I have to transport, we have to transport anyone. Does that help?
No, it does. I would just, it was just that I was struck here at how you can be in the district if you're double up somewhere, because you're in the district.
Yeah, they could, yeah. The ownership, the school of origin ownership is just really too far outside of our normal realm to drive. So transport kids one at half an hour is really, half an hour, forty-five minutes, even forty-five minutes is tough. We transported a child over an hour last year, and it was really hard. I mean, she, in order to beat traffic, she was in a car coming here by six thirty in the morning. Something, you know, six thirty, forty to seven.
I had a question about, so if I had a follow-up question, you answered by you know, the number of students that have been on this program for more than one and more than two years?
Correct.
So can you tell us something qualitatively about, especially if it's the number of students more than two years? I mean, now I would hope that, you know, all the various services the state has, like, has, is this, these people aren't finding expeditions? Are these people that are taking advantage of us?
is this, these people aren't finding expeditions, or these people are taking advantage of us, make it both? Do you not know yet, I'm just curious, can you tell us anything about those?
Um, I, I took over, you know, this is my second year. So, I've, I've really tried to find out what the living situations are. It is the most delicate balance, special ed is a delicate balance in itself. Homeless is, is another very delicate balance. You have to, you have to ask questions and pry, and be gentle and comforting all at the same time. There are some families that I am not sure of. We had three or four families that had been two or more years, that came off last year. And I think some of it was the annestation form that, that I put in place last year. I think some of those, some of the questions gently asked, but ruffled some feathers, and they're no longer on our list. So again, I'm trying to be gentle, but ruffle as much as I can to, I mean, I'm a taxpayer too. I, I, it's, if you're in a really bad situation, I want, we want to help. If you're not, then you really need to go where you live. We have some families that I think have come, came here, were sponsored in, in our territory, and are living with relatives. I can't tell you that they're sharing expenses or not sharing expenses. I don't, you know, to investigate them is very challenging. I think the, you know, the electronic system, where you look at where they're, they're paying their taxes from, and what bills they're paying, that may really help knock off some, but I can't, I don't know that. I, I don't know that I agree with the question, it's really challenging.
As we work through the residency discussion also, I guess I could use to hear if we can apply investigative resources to these students. So, no matter what the options, we have these are students that are truly sleeping on, but I still find capitalized. So I don't know if it's like, in my car. But, you know, we either need to get, you know, resources to them, or if they're connected with that, or they're taking advantage of us, we need to have a chat with them. And I think it's tough to rob them of the person who's both good and bad. By services, you're, you're that person, for cheating taxpayers, there's a hard message to send at the same time. So if we have, you know, through this way of looking at residency, if that's an additional task, investigators can almost, like, might help her for through the block.
One of the things I'll tell you is, once a student has ownership or homeless, it is very tough. The, the hearings that you have for residency are tough. The hearings you have for a homeless residency, I would say, are even tougher. Our best defense is to, to catch anyone that is not being truthful before they truly enroll. So homeless is tough, because you have to enroll right away. But as we get, most of my enrollment happen in August, before school started. Where you have a, have a week or so typically to be able to do any, any kind of investigations or proof. So it is, it is challenging, but if we can catch them before they come in, that helps. Then you don't, you don't let them in, because you have, have a level of proof, and you don't have to prove through here, if that makes sense. But the homeless rule says you have to enroll when they want to enroll. You have to provide that service and that investment. But it's August, if school's not such a net, you have a little bit of leeway time.
Can you just remind us again, what's the, you said that if we are significantly down, can you find that?
Um, seventeen kids.
We're, we have a total of seventeen?
We have a total of seventeen, increased from last year. We're between forty-two and forty-four, the number does fluctuate.
Any more questions, Turner? Forty-two, forty-four, what?
Students that are, that are unvet, about that, yeah.
Thank you, Robert.
With your financial update? Next time.
Okay. Um, really, these are the financials that you've been receiving on late, um, January, and things are in your pockets already. I was going to kind of give you the highlights of where we stand mid-year. Okay. Um, as of the end of January, on our revenues, we are sitting with about forty-five point eight percent left to go. It's a little better than we usually are here. A lot of people started paying the first installment of their taxes in December, so they started to distribute in January. Now, the taxes are due this Thursday, so we'll start seeing the first installment of the 2017 budget starting to come in. Um, the other places that we're seeing money come in is state categoricals. Talk about that a little bit. So, this is all the amount that's been approved by the state board event that they're owed to us. And they have actually already paid us about, well, they paid nine thousand dollars in these categoricals. The evidence-based funding, they have been paying about 3.3 million, another ninety-nine thousand came in here. And this is from prior news adjustments that we made some call time. However, this is the 2018. If you'll recall, they were two quarters behind on state standard impact. That was the only money that we budgeted for. They made all of those payments. So they made all the payments on the money that we decided to budget for. We said we weren't really uncomfortable that there were going to be any payments on these. So you can see that ninety-eight hundred, we were holding about right, and our skepticism was paying off. February, just now, they started making payments. So we've seen another four hundred thousand dollars come in. So our ending position will be better than what we budgeted for, because the state did start making some payments just a few days ago. So we're going to have another four hundred thousand dollars coming in, just came in last week. Um, the additional money from the evidence-based funding formula, remember, it was last year's base amount, and then that supplement, three hundred fifty thousand, or three hundred fifty million dollars. We're hearing still April that they may start making those distributions. We still have absolutely no idea if responding numbers are coming in, and we've got, we've seen that. So hopefully by the end of March, they'll give us some numbers before they start making some distributions in April. As soon as we have those numbers, we'll, you know, they are.
Frank, real quick, is there a range for which we expect to most likely be in, like, a some sort of?
Numbers that we were saying was under a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
It was not, it wasn't significant. I just kind of have to tell, it depends on where you fall in the tiers compared to everyone else.
Okay.
Um, preliminary numbers have us receiving some money, but not significant.
Okay, and is there a chance that this might all fall through?
I mean, there's possibility that it can happen. There's always that possibility. That's why we actually did, we, you know, budgeted. So we'll see about it. Um, on the expenditure side? Don't get freaked out with the percentage here, that we only have remaining twenty-two percent. We do run encumbered numbers, so these big encumbered numbers, those are all salaries and benefits. To run them to make sure that I'm in a good place for year-end, which we are at this point, that salaries and benefits, with an additional two million dollars, we're really still sitting out there for all other expenses. So we are on track to be on budget on the expense side for the year. Um, as of this point, our fund balance right now is thirty-two million. You can see we are at this point running a surplus position. A lot of that is due to the extra taxes coming in early. But we are, we are exactly where we thought we would be. We'll be a little bit better because of mandated passing, and we just want payment of those mandated categoricals. And we'll see if that make another one, and we'll wait and see what happens again.
Any questions? Any questions? Okay. I gave a feedback resolution. I'm just going to complete this.
I'm busy this one. I like how you only had the clicker for the.
Yeah, that's why we only.
You got that.
Okay, I'll be here. Oh, um, the next one, the feedback resolution. So, we've discussed it before. These are about any property that makes the yield, the property tax, feel worth. The change in assessed value, which is a deal worth, that they're accustomed to. Um, at that point, we do get notification. And we're at our, the history has been, is that the board has passed a resolution that states that anytime we have a, usually a commercial property, that is looking for this kind of assessment reduction that we do intervene in the case. Generally, what happens is, you know, the assessors will come in here, they'll keel, give a number down here, and we kind of negotiate with them in the end of summer, and they'll, and everybody will. So it saves us some money on our tax base. Because these deals, when they are finally done, right off the top of your incoming tax. So it's done after the levy has already been put out on the entire tax base. So we really are seeing actual reductions coming in off of your revenue turn to speaking. Again, it is only the ones that are under the tax. We do need to, we, you know, if it's your intention to continue to do this practice, we do need to pass the resolution again, and speaking around, because the attorney firm that handles it for us, Chief Denny, and so we, we're trying to put this particular about that name on the true name of the firm. So the resolution should be in your pocket for you to look. It does say that we will, we will intervene. Um, we are the only taxpayer that goes. So we are very, although it's only a couple thousand dollars next year, we know we are. Since I've been here, at least, we've never got to a point where we needed to get another assessment on any properties. We've kind of just settled them somewhere in the middle, so saving some revenue dollars for the district. The reason that we have to do a, this resolution is that when we get notification in a very short window to let Cook County know that we are intervening, and there's usually not enough time to get to do our work, you can get your approval, and then get our terms to, to enter in our pack. So we happen to speak to have this resolution that just gives us the ability to report.
Questions? We should advance, but if you can answer later. How much have we spent on this since we passed last resolution? How much has it generated for us since the state?
Since we passed the last resolution? I couldn't tell you, sure, I couldn't know that, I think we're only paying, I think we paid out somewhere between under ten thousand dollars, I've just had to come really go through these last couple of years. It's really, usually not too much work involved, unless we really get into, into a fight. I, I, in my prior experience, we had a very large fault that not only did repeat tab, but went through, like, the county court system, and that generated bills. But none of these have really generated very much, it's like a couple of meetings with the attorneys, and usually they're, you know, they're, they're let out pretty fast. However, I would say on average, we have saved, depending on the property, probably anywhere between ten thousand and twenty-five thousand dollars of the revenue, depending on which property it is.
On a annual basis or a monthly?
Uh, that would be on an annual basis per, per property. So some of these can get to be pretty pricey, but there will be for a significant reduction in assessment.
So can you give me for those totals? Especially our unit totals for the year.
I see that is precise enough. Right, then, then.
Yeah, I mean, for what would be in legal, please bring a number of revenue, that would be sustaining at this.
Thank you. Facility plan. I'm sorry, policy eight twenty-five, you know, it's got.
Okay. So what this is really about, and we put into your package, is a new building usage procedure. And we really didn't have the opponent in place, so we prepared that huge document that we gave you, which is pretty much how you go about requesting to use our facilities, what forms you need, whatever the rules and regulations, what fees, those types of things. So you'll see that whole package. When I went through all of the associated policies, really, the policies are pretty vague. There were very packed procedures, so we put together that, that whole package. The biggest thing with the policy was there was one policy that said pretty bluntly that we will not advertise for any commercial companies. We all ran the G. We have a lot of programs that were being run for students in our buildings, not being run by us. They are being run by commercial companies, such as GM Chess Academy, the robotics, the engineering kids. They're commercial properties, they're good things for students, and, and, you know, like that, we give them those opportunities, but they are a part of our companies. So we need to change the policy that gives us the ability to allow some of that advertising to go home, to students, when they are not taxed, however the superintendent would be appropriate. The other part that I think that's major in what we put into that schedule is we started looking at, the fourth current schedule for fees is very lengthy. It, it has random pieces to, it's not just a cost per hour. Then it starts talking about utility charges and a whole bunch of little ancillary things. And quite honestly, I was a little confused as to how I could even apply it along pieces. So what we did was, we did a seventy-five dollar income rate to almost all of these companies that have been using our facilities, and sent out to those. And it was met with a huge roar, because those bills were pretty large, because they're, they're in the buildings for several hours. Um, so I then started talking to these companies and inviting them to come in, and send me their, their numbers, and try to really look at what kind of programs they're running, and, you know, are the fees appropriate, or are there essentials that need minimized, you know, those are money to continue with the program. After I looked at a lot of the numbers that they came in, I think I had at least four of them come in and actually sit down and walk me through and talk about what they've given to their programs. And please remember, these are all private programs. We looked at that and said, maybe our fees are probably out there, if we want to encourage these kinds of programs. So the recommendation in front of you is to change that twenty-five dollar an hour rate to most of the seventy-five. Most of the people that I spoke to seem to think that that would be fair. They all saw that, you know, yeah, they're, they're using the space, they are charging students, that that would be more reasonable. So that's, that's one of the things that we would like to change. Now, please understand, we're not charging our CTO, we're not charging anything, that's, you know, our, our programs here are obviously run by ourselves. And there's groupings in there, so if you're in a nonprofit organization, those fees are waived as well. The last piece of this is there is a software called N L Schedule that we looked into, did a couple of webinars with them, and we looked at what it was, talked to some researchers who are using it. It's actually an automated system where an outside group could, a lot of, you know, will be on our website, I think, our website, they could log in, make an application for where they want to rent the space, which days, has the ability to upload their certificate of insurance. They wouldn't be able to even submit the request until that piece was uploaded. It then goes to the building principal to, you know, make sure that the calendar's good, they all need space for that. They can push it forward to, you know, my office, to make sure everything is appropriate. The system will automatically bill them if they are a group that insists it takes an employee. And it kind of really makes it a little smoother, stops having so many people with their hands on it while, and just kind of makes a little smoother process all around. It also has the ability to have a builder case accounting, there's a rule, you know, the spaces are already being used. So that, that's all the work that we've done on this, the N L Schedule. So that, that's all the work that we've done on this, the NLS schedule.
So it's twenty-five dollars per half. Um, is there a, um, cutoff time in, in the afternoon or evening that we allow our space available?
Essentially, when we have people voting.
I, I'm just trying to, so I guess my bigger question is, what is the cost to us when we, um, open our spaces up to organizations to use it?
You know, we usually have the studio support on hand anyway. Our fee structure does double for the weekends, um, because we usually do not have staff on hand. And nothing there says that we have to approve it anyway, so those give us a full discretion. Um, but mostly, you know, maybe some cleanup, um, the buildings are, they're already open and they're being, they're being cleaned, you know, the evening taxes. Um, so, you know, as to what additional cost may occur, just what else we can do to utilize the space is very important.
And, and this issue really, this was organic, this came from a number of parents and talked to a number of them at, at PTO meetings, really working from, people try to put kids in a position, have an idea for a club that I can run on, I think money, putting resources back into it, and that's, that's where Fran took her credit, really went out and sort of finding policies, examples of districts that do try to support those organic and homegrown clubs in a way that we're, we're not creating artificial barriers between a parent with a great idea or a talent or a skill and our children, as opposed to, you know, clubs that are going to, they're making money and making a large profit and using our materials. So I think we're striking a pretty good balance.
We did also just pull pretty tight on insurance stuff, but we have a question down there. So everybody has to have their insurance on the board.
Do we have a scheduling priority, um, for, uh, homegrown clubs versus, you know, like getting an outside entity coming in?
And, and here there is, what we did was we kind of implemented groupings and group wants literally is possible. You know, we always had first crack at our own facilities. Uh, two are groups that, um, are not for profit groups, um, that are still child oriented, girls have voice out, those kinds of things. Um, and then after that, it becomes a profit group. And for those, honestly, I think there's not a lot of first class.
So it's not the case of this profit group's going to commit, they've occupied our entire space and now here's a number left for?
We don't, we don't have any groups that are, that are doing that, you know, they're on work there, you know, support a couple of classrooms or getting in space or.
In terms of a master library, um, how has scheduling been handled up until now?
So there's a paper form that the buildings will get to, the people who are requesting, they'll fill it out, they'll say the secretary, the room, they are out there, they need insurance and stuff, they, and those are the principals will sign it, and I'll go to my office and I'll also make sure that the, they get insurance. A lot of times we don't have those sorts of tickets, so we call out to them to get a certificate, get a way to get it back from them. Then I'll have to put together, get the fees and structure put together, then we might slime off on it. It just is long and security, man, power oriented, and one of the computer can do this sort of first. And it's really, it's, it's like eighteen hundred dollars a year, it'll be eleven hundred if it's prerated to help us, and that's a moving configuration, so it's really, it's a matter of keeping it on a weekly. And the other nice thing about it is that it'll then have all sorts of insurance in one place, that same company is usually in it, it'll probably, it's already in there for them, it makes it just about easier.
So manually, pretty much is helping through that day?
Yeah, manually, I'd say we're probably better than two weeks turnaround, probably done in two days.
So what are the requirements on insurance? Is it just basically if somebody slips and bumps their kid, or is it an unfortunate case if our kids are in contact with the wrong type of person?
We need, here's what we're actually requiring. Uh, they must get our mission certificate of insurance covering the use of the facilities, maybe plus one sixteen months additional insurance, amounts of a million dollars in among for each occurrence, bodily injury, liability, property damage, liability, and has been, not less than one million dollars to cover. Um, so we're basically.
So then, so it's basically so for physical injuries, so then what, this is, this is my own personal question. So then what are, were this discussed, as far as knowing who is in contact with the kids? Is it whoever brings them into the building, or is that part of the district?
It's not, it's not on us. And that's one of the reasons why we also started working with what do the flyers say when they come home? So we started stopping things that say it's, you know, the, whichever school's chess club or whichever club, school's robotic club, it is not. It is chess academy at medical school run by this company. So we started being very particular about when it comes home, what does mom see when she looks at this? Do you think that we're running this, or that it's another company? Because we don't have control over who's coming to the building when it's coming.
You know, this here is a good point, I would change that to a personal.
I'm sorry, say again.
I would change the language and the handling of the rules. You, you want to cover all of ours, not just bodily injury and property. And I don't think it's a meaningful difference that organizations getting insurance or giving a real policy.
So which, what do you want me?
In, um, page, page one, I hear I have three under application procedures. It says million minimum for each occurrence, bodily injury, liability, and property damage liability. Um, and, and maybe, uh, a little better, sort of more, I wish, better phrase, but I definitely would expect to see personal injury, not to phrase personal injury in there.
All probably have, all right, sure. So next time around, we'll really, really briefly move on to group handle. Number two, to go first reading on the policy change, which I will run by John, it will be back to the, uh, the, and the third thing would be to, that's to.
Next, item facility plan.
So we discussed that, we discussed that, um, you know, what, not only for our construction projects, like life safety and so on, but what other are small term maintenance things that we need to look at? What is a full facility plan look like? Um, and there are multiple groups that, that do things like this. The first one, the first one that we talked to was, um, the great, they get in here in our buildings, they, you know, know the buildings, they've done the life safety program, um, so they have a hand to pass. What they do, and there's an example in your, your report notes there, is, I think they give an eighty-nine page report on all of the, the facilities in that district and, you know, what they saw, what needs to be done. Um, so the cost of thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, it's a nice report. My problem is that it's a static, runtime report. Um, it would still take a lot of man hours here to keep that updated, that once we take care of something, how does that schedule into the future? What does that do with one of my assets that I have here? Um, how, you know, it just leaves a lot of holes to me. Um, we also talked to school. School do, uh, we already have a comp, we use it for workload reports on the technology side as well as on the operations and maintenance side, because, you know, regular, they request that full maintenance. What's school do will also do is come in and do a full facility assessment. Um, they will go around and produce a report that looks very similar to, uh, bring together, there's a very small example that I've put in there as well, which will do. Um, so they come with a static report, but what they also then do is they calculate these two pieces of software. There's a capital forecast software, which is more of the long-term major construction projects, but they put in there, you also have, we have that inventory. So every boiler, every, you know, heater, air, you know, every water heater, everything that we have, the information would go in there with life expectancy and so on, so that would start feeding the larger plans as to when you could expect that these things need to be replaced. Additionally, there is a project maintenance piece that goes into the regular school do, so it would be, we would work in conjunction with our normal workload position, but it would also give you, um, just regular maintenance. So when we still put the, um, the parking box, might do the, you know, replace whatever it is that needs to get developed, those smaller projects as opposed to your larger capital. Um, also into the larger capital, they would put in additional costs, like safety survey and those things that are being made there. So it would effectively give you a long-term plan and provided that we kept up with the software package, which is, I'll attach, it would stay viable and cool going forward. Um, when I spoke to school do, they said, if you are diligent about taking care of that software and keeping it accurate with everything that you've done and making sure you, you know, filling out the information on the systems, you don't ever really need to have another full facility assessment done again. And their price is like thirty-six thousand, and that includes the two pieces of software. Um, one is the operation current ones that we have, and then the second one is the additional piece of those software. I liked it just because it gives us reporting, um, you know, lots of ports that we can run. Um, it gives us the ability to tweak the schedule, it gives us the ability to, you know, just keep it going moving forward, it's not just one something on a newspaper. Um, and so I think we will bring those with that recommendation. And we think that this then would be a nice piece. We have this done and then we can put this PTAB forecast back so that you have, you know, your five passive flavoring tier, your five, your, your.
So it'll help you to collect data and historically be able to keep that in time in, in fingers, if I was looking at this, right, would be, but it is something you have software, you have to.
You would have to do, well, I'm sure that they're going to have software upgrades and there is an annual fee just for the software is what it comes down to. Um, we're already paying about twenty-hundred, hundred dollars for a school do, um, this would be for all of the, um, software in about five thousand dollars, so you're twenty-nine, twenty-nine hundred dollars a year or something like that. I think this would be a nice piece that would just give us that stuff that we're missing. Right now, all of our documents are just, you know, in file cabinets and so on, so there's really, there's easy way to put it into timeline and says, yeah, this is what we expect we're going to, you know, starting to get some.
And just, kind of just looking systematically, this information is critically important. We can't have conversations about classrooms or student numbers, et cetera, with any vision to the district without knowing exactly what we're dealing with, because then we could make value decisions about placing, keeping, et cetera, with, in our physical plan or any of the other items that are listed in that report.
One question, this comes to mind, I don't know if I missed this or not, does it allow it to hold bigger information, like we get what project in there and the cost out on things like that?
No, that I don't know. Um, I can certainly find out. I do know that there's a lot of, like, places for notes and, and to customize yourself. Um, and again, they would help us figure into what we want it to be, but it would be all five facilities and, and so on. I gotta think that there's probably a way for us to.
Being an ex-vendor, put this refund.
Yeah, and so maybe the next year, something comes up, we can go back and do some comparables or work, you know.
This is just.
Yeah. And he says buy facilities at one count, we can't prove.
Oh, we can't, but I said, I see, I'm sorry.
Yeah, be good. I'm all this. Be good. Yeah, that, that was helpful to, 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 to raise my hat.
I agree. And you can import into, uh, forecast five, you say?
I may not be able to import it in what I was, to be able to get the report that will leave in all the information that I need to do that off.
Okay, and what, what would be the labor savings to this number?
Here's the thing, right now, you need this back, and Scott doesn't have the time to do it.
Okay.
And they're going to bring a team, they're going to bring a team of people and they're going to do it fast. Um, but, you know, something that would take Scott probably to do better, people to do.
So is that initially speaking, people from there?
Oh, yeah, they, okay, and then they do this, they will do the assessment for us. They will walk up to every single piece of equipment and take down the serial numbers for us and start logging. It will absolutely, totally populate, it will be a turn piece of something. And then we just take it from there and they'll start training us and teaching us what we need. So I will bring that back to you as well.
Hang on there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Action items.
Well, I do have, I do have a question.
That's all right. So keep going.
Just, just, really, just follow.
Okay, so, okay, so we're going to move to actions. Was this a question about facility plans?
No, no, not.
Or, okay, so can I have a motion to approve a contract with ring associates on hiring a construction manager to oversee the twenty-eighteen summer life safety projects?
So.
Mr. Brady?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I have a, a quick question. Um, I just want clarification about the construction manager. Um, I, I want to know whether or not, is this somebody that will work on Orion, or this is.
Yes, that will work for us. He's working through the ring on behalf of the school district to make sure that the construction firm stays on path, on time, and on level. He was the same construction manager that we had on the Harper addition, on the head tower. So he's familiar with the district, he knew the dark side of this, and so that's why we asked for this specifically.
Okay, so, and I guess my other piece to this question, and I got about this all the way here, um, if, if, and I'm just, just putting this out, if we weren't dealing with the company that we were dealing with that had some time issues, starts to be time lines, uh, would, would we, will we need, will we need this person?
Here's, I'm, I'm trying to articulate this. Here's how it went, okay? Number one bidder, you gotta remember, is significantly lower than numbers two and three. Got it? Number two was another firm that we had some experience with, also made some timeline issues that were concerning. Bidder number three was very close to bidder number two, and then someone would have come over, but it was two hundred fifty thousand dollars different. It's still a two hundred thousand dollar difference, even with this and actually, you know, more, about forty-three thousand. Um, but this is what's getting you that comfort level, that it's done on time. If that's really our concern, this is a tight project, this is a lot of the pieces, and we need somebody who has that kind of skill set because, well, this timeline, you can have the strokes.
So, I, I, I guess, I just want to make sure you get your answer on my question, if I'm understanding. So, again, it wasn't this, would we have any?
No, so if it was the third.
Or the, or somebody else?
But the third lowest bidder, if they were first, we would have, but given our history with the two lowest, certainly the lowest bidder. And I give our history, our current experience, construction debt is a really prudent choice and, and, you know, this is a lot, this is a lot of construction that we're doing, we are scraping for every penny. We brought them down on this contract as well, um, because every penny is important. And we know that we're having to expend part of our savings because of our conservative construction company, so it's important to, and I had to make sure that we were clear that. So it's important to fair and I to make sure that we were clearly agreeing about us wanting to get the best deal and agreed to reach credit. They responded, they were very aggressive in their accounting.
And I'm saying, no, having a G C, a part of a construction project is not unusual. It's just, we would have not been able, we would have not needed one, had it not been, or had issues, but having a G C is, for such a large project, it's not uncommon place.
Absolutely, and our architects are on site, so it's not like they aren't on site. It's just they got it to move later.
I was surprised that this queue through, that these employees and employees. I know we have a warm relationship with them, I don't have a reason not to. When problems arise in construction sites, either the architect or the contractor should have, most of the dispute is surrounded by pay for it. And they're just a little bit of a conflict interest with this individual. I thought we were hiring someone who's going to be our contract employee, our representative. And I know, I guess, practically, that's a very good, so this may be purely here as a concern. But that bothered me a little, because, you know, K door comes through, it may very well be a pre-essential fault. Probably not given it through what happens. So what's all, what's this employee work for us? It may just be.
So. I mean, I will say that in the dealings with Green in the last several years, when the fault had theirs, they loaned it, they took off two-thousand dollars off this last project for us because they accepted that some of this was there. So, you know, obviously, we have kind of that going, and I guess that's, that's fair. I totally get what you're saying, but I have no idea how to go on.
I mean, that does give us, I mean, obviously, we have history with Green, so that was actually one of my questions as well, because when I think about scenarios where you need an owner's rep or a third party, the owner's rep is representing the owner. They're working on our app and the contractors between the owner's rep and the owner, not the architect. So that was a little different for me as well.
The final piece, I guess, I have to ask, and I don't remember how this works out, but with Green and Associates, they get a percentage of the overall cost of the project?
All of their costs are included in this.
So, if that's said, does this get added to there?
Oh, yeah.
But it's theory, I think, so if I remember, their percentage is like three percent. But the, if I understand, they represented to us, it was forty-nine thousand. They're not, they're not making money off it, it's passing straight through.
They're not making any, they're not making any anymore.
Yeah.
So it's coming like a terrible cost.
Passing straight through. And they may be eating some costs because they're being bonded by insurance obligations.
Yeah, yeah, human resources, you just, they won't know those pieces, but.
So, like, I don't like it. The next time, can we not do it? We have history trust with them, so am I, but.
All right.
What's the alternative suggestion?
I'm tired of person wrecked it off. Be the same guy. No reason we couldn't turn it on, except passing it.
It's the same thing. It could be possible, and how this arrangement is, which we're gonna do not.
It shouldn't happen.
That could be, I think that could be a discussion in the next.
Yeah, that's what was better. Any more questions? Roll call, please. Briggs?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Go on.
Yes, and the motion is passed. May I please have a motion to approve taking no action on the tax payment question for the 2017 levy year, and the conversation be renewed for the 2018 levy year in November 2018, when further detailed information will be provided to the board at the discussion and potential action. So we move. Brady, second. Brady, discussion?
I found this curious. I've had a vast time to talk about it before. Why are we supposed to be getting this information?
So there's a science of the jungle that I can get at the board, I don't have a place on a little bit. There also should be one of these in your, your place.
Was this in the packet? Okay, I just.
So, I started running some, some things, and this gets to be a little complicated. So this is actually a pretty basic bracket. The top line forces your fund balance. And where you're starting at about thirty billion, our, this is the operating fund. If we just did half a million dollar maintenance every year through the life of the bond, you're gonna end up with a fund balance, give or take, of about seventeen million dollars. So you'll be down to on about five months' worth of spending. If you go to the second sheet, I'm going to very quickly show you why I'm saying this is pretty rudimentary. So for fiscal year nineteen, you're gonna see that big deficit position, and that's the construction. So this is all the products that we're doing, we're just talking about. If you go then to 2020, you're gonna see inwards that other expenditures, that line will drop off dramatically. And then it's based flat for the next forty, forty years of flat there. The only numbers that are gonna go up on your expenditure side, your salary, benefit, cost, that's of course an attribute based on number of people, but it is, you know, a reasonable level of potential. We have our contracts, our quote of pardon contracts in place. If you go up to the revenue line, we tell state funding and federal funding flat. Because with the settlement fixed funding model, I'm not sure that we're going to see anymore than flat where we're at right now. And the federal money doesn't seem to be going anywhere fast either. So that leaves your top number, and that's your levy. So what happens is with an assumption of a five CPI, which is where we've been averaging over the last ten years, and then taking a five-hundred-thousand-dollar payment, your tax number and your salary and benefit number are pretty close to being equal. When your revenue projections start actually going down because you're using cash to give back, your revenue numbers are starting to go down, your salaries and benefits are going up, even though it's only an average of about two percent. Those lines cross, and you start using your fund balance not only for the advantage, but you start using even fund salaries and benefits too. And there, from that point, your fund balances start tripling off that. And that's how you look at seventeen million average, so it lead to about 2020 grid. And that's not putting in any of the other projects that we're talking about. It's not putting in, talking about putting steam labs and all the building after serving it. It's not talking about technology device placement. It is not talking about E L A curriculum or any other curriculum that follows that. It's just keeping everything the same, except for salaries and benefits, and that's at the current staffing level, not the one that you're talking about. And then you're starting to hit your revenue stream, your, the only real revenue stream that you have in control, which is a profit base, basically, that only have control of C P I.
So, I'm a little confused. I thought that the baby discussion was primarily about, we were gonna use fund balances to pay down, basically, principal and interest on bonds. You can't pay them off early, but we can at least, instead of that showing up on the lineup on the taxpayer bill, we can pay some of it.
Yes, but it has to come out of your Ed fund.
Okay.
Your pass will be out of your Ed fund balances because you wouldn't be putting taxes out there. This does not include your debt service fund. Because that debt service fund can be there, you still have to then transfer the money from here into debt service and pay your bonds. And that's why we're showing it as a decrease in the education fund.
So I guess where I got lost was on the, how we, they would be, you would be paying now funds to cover salaries.
You would be, you would be taking the cash out of Ed fund essentially, and moving it into your debt service fund so that you could pay your bonds, okay? When you do that, your revenue line there on the top for that education fund is gonna come down because you had to move that money in order to make your bond pay. When you do that, the amount of money that's coming in on your local property tax line for education fund starts being less than your salaries and benefit money. So now you're also dipping into your cash reserves to pay what's missing. You see what I'm saying?
And when do the bonds expire? When, what is the payoff?
The last payoff is December first, 2024.
So we have to keep this going for another year past 2024?
Uh, yeah, but that December first, 2024 is like a two-hundred-thousand-dollar last bid.
So.
It's not a full million.
And so last time we were here, Fran, I asked if you could do whatever mental exercise you probably go through to figure out a fund balance that you would feel comfortable with.
So if you look at my memo, here's where I came up with it. And when I found out that I'm still kind of cashing through my brain, but to me, it seems that, on the second page of the memo there, where it's got a point two, three, four, it seems to me that the fund balance needs to do several things. Number one, it has to satisfy maintaining the current recognition status with the state board of that. They were all saying, you want to make sure that there's still recognition status. The second piece is, I want to make sure that you can maintain your current bond rate and asset rate. Those two things probably will go in, and yes, people probably want more cash in bank than just being part of that. But I'm gonna work with the N A on that piece. You also need to really take into account making sure that we have enough cash in bank to sustain a potential pension shift. Right now, the governor was talking about twenty-five percent, the first year, and then bring it in, and then a fourth year phase. My recommendation would be to have your loan can be out of fund balance. So that first quarter will come out of your fund balance the first year. In the second year, you need that first twenty-five percent to be absorbed by your operating budget and pick up the second twenty-five percent out of cash. So essentially, you get, every year, you can pick up another quarter of that pension shift, which to us is about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So you would need to absorb two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars over the course of four years into your operating budget, so that by the end of that, it would actually be a five-year cycle, you would have another million dollars absorbed by your operating budget. That would be difficult, because that's gonna mean that other things are gonna be declined. But at least I have the ability to smooth them in as opposed to just dropping it down. And so I want to project what that would look like, and how we possibly start putting up those kinds of costs. And then getting there is, what is our worst-case scenario? Is it absolutely no state funding and no federal funding against a one-point-five CPI? And what does that look like on your operating budget? Because we've already said that the intent of the board is to keep a balanced operating budget and use cash only for either one-time expenditures or smoothing of your operating budget. So this isn't a simple answer by any sort of interpretation, but this is a complicated thing. And then I would think that you would want to take a look at, that fund balance would be a dollar. It would be how many months' worth of expenditures, which you want to make sure you have in bank, so that the number fluctuates as your expenditure costs drop. Is that answer your question?
It does, and it also tells me that you haven't figured out what your comfort balance is.
Not yet. No, because there's a few things in here that I want to make sure that you can still do. I think it's definitely, it's really important that you maintain your bond rate. Because while we're gonna pay them off in 2024, if you have these more down, down the road, I don't want you paying a higher level of interest because you let your fund balance get so low that you now are not able to be competitive in markets.
So all these conversations are connected. This is directly connected to that staffing conversation we had earlier. Talk about the reductions in force, we don't take it lightly, but there are areas where we can make changes how we allocate our resources without reducing programs. We want to start doing those activities now and recapture those bonds to make sure that you are ready to handle, whether it's a payment of some sort, reduction cost shift, all these different pieces that we can't account for currently.
Any other questions or problems, concerns, regarding?
I would just say that overall, I think that I appreciate the concern that Fran and Dr. Smith, Brad, and personally, for me, and I would be the last risky person there in some ways, maybe now. I take risk. I understand that the, so super ten, assistant super ten recommendation always what it is, is to project first, so I'll defer their judgment on that. For powers of connection, that was.
But I think it does provide direction, is to move into this conversation this fall, putting together the capital plan, making sure we're very clear, less far, we're thinking about future purchases, hopefully the magic cost shift, we've figured out what that's going to be, but also what is our risk exposure? You know, some salaries and those sorts of things. We want to provide the most information possible, so you can make a decision that you're comfortable with, even if it's a little bit riskier than you thought, having a complete profile, and only financial, which is what you said.
I just hope we're positioning ourselves to make, to really have those meaningful conversation items to have. Because I don't know, it's not that comfortable, but go ahead.
I can't believe it.
And just, this is just something that, one, we got this information today. I appreciate all the effort to get that information there. I'm not saying change anything, I hope we get a list of the change to being true. You know, I just, I think I just would like to have more, we could have more conversation around this, talking about this, and I know that's supposedly coming. So hopefully, we can have more.
Well, obviously, Fran, I think, I mean, we should probably think about how to calendarize this conversation, because what I prefer not to have is a reactive conversation, because now it's time to decide on a levy. I mean, so there's a lot of work, I know, that you have done, and that you'll continue to be doing behind the scenes. Because the other part of that equation is, you know, you've come back with your magical number, you know, where you feel comfortable at, then the board needs to decide, are we also comfortable with having a fund balance that looks like that's right? We also need to decide, do we want to create any type of policy so that the, there's something in place that gives us, gives the board guidance around how do you think about, who discussed this topic going forward? But then the other piece of that is, you know, what are all of those others? So if we agree that we're comfortable with a reduced fund balance, you know, what's, what is the most comfortable way of spending those dollars that directly impact instruction? Right, so all the things that I know that you and M Val and other administrators are working on, what are those products? Right, I mean, so, if we want to reduce it, do we want to reduce it to pay debt? Or do we want to reduce it because we are increasing our program? I know can increase in programs or initiatives is not necessarily equal, you know, an increase in scores or anything like that. I mean, so I'm very cautious about that as well. But we need to see what that list of items looks like. So sooner rather than later, this is not a November conversation.
Well, so realistically, the timeline has to be finished by October, potentially, somewhere. Well, so realistically, the timeline has to be finished by October, potentially somewhere in that area. At least I have a good idea, because we want to have a perspective on this as you move to the levy discussion. You know, I mean, because they are...
Ideally, I would hopefully start having those discussions with the levy process.
I would agree.
So then you're seeing a sum. And then that's where I think those pieces really start coming together. Um, it's, it's gonna be a tight timeline, that facility plan is going to take some time. And I'm waiting on the vote, if we get that information to us, um, it'll be, you know, just, just a whole lot of many pieces we're dealing with, and, and figuring out what those other pieces are, because I need that information to build in. Like, yeah, that, we're all have to be built into it next week, whether any of us, that's really where this conversation is. So the conversation starts, and it will start with a whole ton of information, and I'm quite sure about this.
Again, this, at its pinnacle, this is the conversation about the portraits of the director, right? Because that will help make a number of these decisions, at least give us clarity around what's most important to us as we envision this path for our students, wherever they enter our district. We'll be able to make these choices. So what we'll bring back, we can anticipate what the board meeting gains are. At the very least, we'll just put you come up, come up with a timeline that we think will be just appropriate to make sure that we're sharing all the information, having enough time for discussion, and ultimately, I think we'll make the recommendations in the following levy, and then coming into, or I should say, the budget process certainly first, but also then instantly.
Any more questions? Roll call please. Hey, Correitas?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
No.
Horr? Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion, please, to afford the asbestos abatement bid for the Heather Hill boiler room to EPPA Inc. asbestos abatement at a cost of $10,900? Brady, sir? Huckabee, any discussion? Roll call please. Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Correitas?
Yes.
Horr? Yes, and the motion has passed. We're gonna change in I D D, so we will... No action needed on I D. And now is a motion, please, to move to executive session. Matters related, like, you know, about... Matters related personnel, five I L C S, 120, that. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Um, there's that. You should be in executive session. Are you waving your hand at the five?
I'm waving, I'm waving.
Five, yes.
There's no action, there's no action.